Yeah, it's a risky gamble.
I think my thought is a town meeting tonight.
There's a town meeting tonight, that's why I can never go to the conference.
Thank you.
If I forget them or something, just tell me.
All right.
If that's your big plan.
Something's not as long.
Just go shake my head.
How lame I am.
Yeah, he's been home since about the summer. He starts early.
All right, Willow, you're way too excited and happy over there. If I can reconvene our meeting to open session, the board has been in executive session since 6 o'clock to discuss a litigation matter and the superintendent evaluation. We could please stand to the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands: One nation, on a ground, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Catherine Natter.
Willow Bear.
Robert Teeger.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Meredith Moyerity.
You and my mate.
John Walston.
John McPhillips.
Do we have any PIG students visiting tonight? Welcome. You guys picked a good meeting to come to.
They know.
Your obligation is to stay until the meeting is over or 9 o'clock, whichever one comes first. And when we are done, you guys should come up and sign out. There are a couple of sign-out sheets up here, and that way you make sure you get credit for being here and don't have to come back again, even though you'd be more than welcome to. First up is our approval of minutes, and first is our approval of the minutes of the May 8, 2024, regular board meeting. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the May 8, 2024, regular board meeting.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Next are the minutes of our May 21, 2024, special meeting for the budget vote and annual election. And before I read the recommended action, I'm just going to ask John to say a couple words about the tallying of the votes.
Madam President, before I start with that, if I could just do a couple of thank yous for last night. In particular, it's a lot that goes into pulling this vote together on an annualized basis. A lot of, you know, hidden figures. I'd like to particularly thank the district clerk and the district leadership team, operations and maintenance staff in terms of our custodial workers who made sure that all the voting apparatus was set up and taken down without issue, our operations and maintenance and grounds team making sure that the grounds were in tip-top shape for the community to come out and vote, our food service folks for keeping poll workers and workers who were bringing folks into the polls fueled and hydrated over the course of the day. It was a long day from 7:00 in the morning until 10:00 last night, as well as many of our non-instructional staff, between support and administrative staff from the buildings, human resources, IT, making sure that all of the mechanics actually made it for a successful endeavor. And in particular, the community at large for coming out and exercising their right to vote. When we tallied the votes after the polls closed at 9:00, we were actually able to get a very quick read of where the status of the various propositions on the budget and ballot stood at the end. The three propositions for the district and the one library proposition. On the candidate side, however, as we were reading off those tallies, we noticed that there was a significantly higher number of write-in candidates for both the Board of Education seats and the Board of Trustees seats compared to prior elections. So we wanted to take a moment before actually making those votes official to take a closer look at that. What I wanted to also note is we had some concern over the course of the budget, given the number of voided ballots that we were receiving from voters who wanted, hey, I made a mistake on my ballot, can I destroy this ballot because I filled in the wrong oval? So we wanted to take a closer look. The ballot design lent itself for some voter confusion. What I want to point out first is the voter ballot that we sent via early vote and absentee ballot, which was slightly different in terms of organization compared to the ballot that was done for the live vote yesterday. So on the candidates, there were three candidates running for two open seats on the Board of Education, eight candidates for three open seats for the Board of Trustees. So when we sent out the absentee ballots and the early voting ballots, this was the design of the ballot. So you had the eight individuals, three write-ins for the Library Board of Trustees, and two write-in opportunities on the Board of Education. We did not see any significant aberration in terms of the write-in votes on either the early votes or the absentees. If we can go over to the live vote. This was the ballot. We submitted the structure of the ballot for the absentee ballot to the Board of Elections for its formatting so it could be read and recognized by the machine. Board of Elections changed the formatting a little bit to the ballot that you're seeing here. Candidates for both the Board of Education, the Board of Trustees, roll left to right, but the Board of Elections also added write-in ballots under each of the candidates' names for both the Board of Education and the Board of Trustees. You'll see three write-in opportunities for the Board of Ed, eight write-in opportunities for the Library Board of Trustees, despite the fact that there were only two open seats for the Board of Education and three open seats for the Board of Trustees. When we raised this issue to the Board of Elections, they did not change. We wanted to say, hey, two write-in candidates for the Board of Education, three write-in candidates for the Board of Trustees, because that's all you could, those were the only open seats available. The Board of Elections said, from an equity standpoint, from its perspective, you needed to have write-in candidates or opportunities underneath all of the candidates. So in the process of voting, voters were voting for either their Board of Education candidates of their choice or the Board of Trustees' choice, and inadvertently in certain instances filled in the oval underneath the candidate that they had intended to vote for. As a result, specifically for the Board of Education, there were 290 write-in ballots. For the Board of Trustees, there were 558, which is significantly higher than we usually see for any election for the school vote. We reached out to council's office. What can we do to investigate and research what the write-in issues are, and if so, is there any remedial action that the district can take to ensure that votes cast by voters are counted and they're unnecessarily disenfranchised because of the layout of the ballot? In speaking with council this morning, the district had two options. They could not count any of the write-in ballots, or, based on the manner in which the ballots were filled out, if it could be reasonably interpreted how the voter wanted to vote, we could count those votes. Last evening, we pulled all the, we maintained the votes from each of the three machines in a separate container. Those votes were locked in a lock cabinet. Over the course of the evening, at 10:00 this morning, district resident staff within the footprint of the Bethlehem Central School District sorted each machine's ballots into, extracted the write-in ballots specifically. We then took those ballots and, as an example, for Lauren Grasso, it was clear that none of the candidates were filled in to the left of the name but were underneath. We counted those write-ins as a vote for that particular candidate. And that was based on guidance from council, and the district has had experience with a very similar issue several election cycles ago. So we wanted to maintain consistency in terms of past practice, as well as making sure that, to the best extent possible, voters were counted. So of the 290 votes for the Board of Education, through this process, we were able to whittle the actual write-in votes to 71, because it was relatively clear as we were going through, whether it was the Board of Education or the Board of Trustees, the circles were filled in underneath the name as opposed to the left. Of those 71 write-in votes, 49 were true write-in votes in that they named a different party other than the candidates running. A lot of Mickey Mouses, a lot of Bugs Bunnies, Favorite Felines, Unsuspecting Neighbors, those are the names that were sort of included in the write-in candidates that we saw. So there were 31 write-ins that were, from our review, couldn't be counted or easily ascertained in terms of a specific candidate. We went through that process. The vote totals between the candidates, between both the Board of Education and the Board of Trustees changed in terms of the raw number of votes, but it did not significantly in any way alter the outcome or significantly change the percentage of the overall vote for those candidates. So I just wanted to provide what we did over the course of the day. We wrapped that process up around 3-ish going through, and it was a little bit of a labor-intensive process. We went through over, you know, just under 2,900 actual paper ballots to sort that through. And then when we identified and isolated those write-in ballots, we actually went hand by hand at each of those, over 800 ballots, evaluating and making sure that votes for specific candidates, if it could be assumed to be for that candidate, were counted.
Thank you for your efforts in this. It sounds like quite a process and quite a job, so we appreciate your efforts to make sure that everything got done properly.
Thanks, John.
Just, one quick question is, you know, this did happen several years ago, something similar. What can we do in the future to prevent this from happening again?
So we had this conversation, so...
You had reached out to the Board of Elections, and they were like, no, 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 don't worry about it. So what can we do next?
So there's a couple of points here. It's ultimately the school district's election. What we are relying upon Board of Elections is for their use of their voting machines and support, both from the formatting and production of the ballot, as well as the technical support should we have an issue with the actual voting machines. I think there's a better way to restructure the write-ins. I think, you know, looking forward, we may have to involve council's office with their council office to sort of make things work so we can avoid not only the additional workload on the district side, but the ultimate confusion on the voter. There's a lot of information on the ballot. You're somewhat confined in terms of the real estate on the ballot when you have multiple propositions. It was this year, particularly on the library side, there were a larger number of candidates which decreased the available space on the paper. So I think starting the process a little bit earlier with communication with Board of Education involving legal representation to the extent appropriate, making sure that we can avoid these sort of issues moving forward. You're always going to have some ballot issue or voter concern, but this was more of a mechanical issue that caused some additional work. And, you know, it was just unfortunate because we like to wrap up the budget vote the day of, so folks know, candidates know, we can, you know, put a seal on it and move on. Unfortunately, we were able to do in a relatively short period of time today, but I appreciate that waiting time for both the community at large and individual candidates was probably a little bit hair-raising.
I would just make sure to provide that feedback to Board of Elections, so they know that this type of ballot is just too confusing to voters.
In my recollection, from the last time it happened, was that the Board of Elections, it's not the Board of Elections vote, right? So the same rules don't apply. There's a plethora of education advisory opinions, because this happens all over the place all the time, in terms of how to interpret the way certain checkmarks are and bubbles are. The Board of Elections doesn't help anyone with this issue, but it seems like it's easier to have our election volunteers, just when they hand it to someone, make sure they point out to fill in a bubble the next time it's this confusing.
It's a little bit of an awkward dance, only because you don't want anyone to assume that the individual just simply checking in a voter is providing guidance in terms of how to vote. So usually the less interaction, the better. Ideally, this was, there didn't need to be three writing candidates for the Board of Education and eight writing candidates for the Board of Trustees. There was no reason to vote that often. We could have maybe structured those in such a way that they sort of straddled the other candidates in the middle of those blocks of votes to sort of differentiate. You know, I'm sort of armchair quarterbacking that now, given, you know, counting 1,000 additional ballots, but we learned, so.
Well, thanks for managing it. Congratulations to Lauren. Congratulations to Jason for running a really robust campaign and for getting a lot of people engaged.
And congratulations to Catherine.
Congratulations.
That said, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the May 21, 2024, special board meeting of the annual budget vote and Board of Education election.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. And just again, congratulations to Catherine and to Lauren, who's in the audience this evening. And Willow, we will miss you very much, but you still have a couple of meetings to go, so you're not off the hook yet. Next on the agenda are our meeting reports, and first is our superintendent's report.
Sure, thank you. Just a reminder that we are still accepting any UPK registrations through Friday. That's the deadline, so next week on May 31 is when the lapperie takes place. Takes place, my understanding is, we have about 75 people who have registered at this point, so I don't expect a huge increase from that. Also, at our last meeting, we had an individual address the board on the consideration of changing the veterans exemption. So John is working on that, and will provide an update to the board at one of our June meetings about what that would look like and what are some options to consider if the board wants to consider changing that at some point in the future. And the last thing, I'd like to just thank our community for the continued support of the school budget and all the propositions that were approved last night. I'm really grateful for the overwhelming support every year and the commitment to our children's education. So thank you for your trust and dedication. And that's my report tonight.
And for the board report, I just want to echo what you said, Jody, and say thank you to the community for supporting the district. And then I also wanted to say thank you to the Alana group at the high school for putting together the food festival last Friday, which I think it seems to grow every year, which I think is a great thing. And I know there are many satisfied customers. Does anybody have anything else they want to comment on? You win.
Thanks to Andrew Ricker for, you know, wrangling the workforce challenge. There were, I think, 58 of us, which was the largest BCSB team we've had ever. And as far as I know, they've all made it around. It was a fun time. I believe the fastest person in the room is sitting to my right, so congratulations to you.
No, there was other teachers.
I'd say in the room.
Oh, yes, yes.
But yeah, it was good.
Great. Catherine?
On the topic of discussion more than reports, I was wondering, with the transition from my school box to Link, there's been a lot of conversation in the community. So I was, one question that I've heard is, my school box allowed for students, excuse me, for families to provide some restrictions on what students may buy at the register, and the question is, will that happen under Link as well?
Yeah, that's still the case. So parents can select what they want their children to buy or not.
Okay, great. The other question I had is, right now, it appears as though my children have $0 in both accounts, and from what I'm hearing from other folks, it seems like that's widespread. I know we were, could you just, sorry, I won't say I know. Would you just please explain that again and the timeline and what happens here in the middle?
Sure. I may rely on Erin Sheer Reserve, Information Technology Officer, to provide some feedback as well. The accounts on my school box need to be drawn for a file transfer to be sent to Link, to be ingested and then uploaded into its files as well. That was going to be about a two- or three-day process. Link is in the process of taking the information that we're sending over and loading those accounts with balances from the host account, and that should be reflected sometime either later this week or early part of next.
Okay. And in the meantime, everyone can buy lunch.
Everyone can buy lunch. Children, students will not be turned away for lunches or meals. So from the student's face, it's as usual.
Wonderful, thank you.
Just real quickly, I think since the last time we met, I've been able to attend multiple middle school and high school musical performances this season, and I just, once again, I'm so blown away with our music department and just the quality that it produces in the middle school and high school in particular.
Thank you for mentioning that, because I listened to the jazz bands, well, bands, last night, and they were great, but it reminded me also to just say, if you guys didn't have a chance last night to check out the senior art shows that are out in the front, I definitely recommend it, because there's some really neat projects out there.
Catherine, did the Lab School Committee meet since our last meeting?
It did. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend, and so Holly...
So not since our last meeting.
Oh, not since our last meeting. I'm sorry. That was the, I'm sorry, because I wasn't at the, thank you.
It's meeting, I think, the first week of June. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have any timeline for teacher involvement positions in this?
No, not at this time.
Anybody from the student senate here tonight? Guessing nobody from the middle school student council either. Next on the agenda is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. At this point, if we have anyone who'd like to address the board on an agenda item, now is the time to come to the microphone. Item five, action items. A, the resolution to certify the 2024-2025 school district budget vote results. It is recommended that the Board of Education certify... Let's see, hold on a second. It is recommended that the Board of Education certify that. It is declared that the 2024-2025 school district budget passed with 74.51% of voter approval, with 2,229 votes in favor and 777 votes against.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. B, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, 1 through 5.
I'll support that one, please.
All right. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, 2 through 5.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. And then it is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action item number 1.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so I haven't, haven't you guys had time to look at the warrant? I almost got excited, like, the first five actually have explanations for what the money's being spent on. And then the rest of them is still just, you know, supplies, supplies, services. So it's clearly possible to put in that one line for some of these warrants to explain what the money's going for. It'd be nice if we can get that done, as many as possible.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? That carries. C, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, 1 through 15.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. And I believe our two new assistant principals are here this evening, Sean Graney and Kimberly Sparkman. If you want to introduce yourselves, you're welcome to.
Thank you very much. That went fast, but thank you for approving me. Super excited to be here. I am a Bethlehem resident with my family, and I can't wait to serve you all and serve our community. So thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sean Graney. I'll just reiterate what she said. I'm extremely excited to be here. I'm excited to work in this amazing community, and I look forward to July 1. I can tell you that much right now. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, welcome. D, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, 1 through 8.
So moved. Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. E, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items, 1 through 4.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
We only had the one response to the RFP for universal PK, right?
We had two. The other one didn't qualify.
Okay. What was that disqualification?
They couldn't submit a budget.
That's...
And they also couldn't, you have to at least have one class, and they only had three spots. So...
It's fine. Move it on, good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Six, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have anyone who'd like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now is the time to come to the microphone. Item seven, future meetings and events. Monday, June 3, at 5:00 is the audit committee meeting, and at 6:00 is the policy committee meeting. Wednesday, June 5, is our next regular board meeting here at the high school, anticipating executive session, and then reconvening the meeting to open session at 7:00. And we have our 2024 tenure teacher reception at 6:30. And then on Wednesday, June 26, that is our, the next regular board meeting after that. That will be, unfortunately, Willow's last meeting with us, and anticipating executive session, and then reconvening to open session at 7:00. And Jody, do you have just the date of the, just because I, since people are interested, the Lab School Committee, what date that's meeting?
I can look that up, too.
June 3.
That's also June 3? Okay.
Yeah, we have Lab School Audit Policy.
Okay, so the ones at 4:00?
4:05, 6:00.
4:05, 6:00, okay. We do need to go back into executive session to continue discussing the superintendent's evaluation. Do I have a...
Before, sorry, sorry, before we put that motion out there, one thing that we, and I'm sorry, we skipped over at the beginning during the reports and discussion session. If we could circle back to that, just to talk about the facilities committee for a quick minute?
Oh, sure.
Sorry about that.
No, that's totally fine. I'm sorry, I forgot that you guys, I totally forgot that you guys just had a meeting. Yeah, so before we, if you want to report out.
I will turn it over to my friend, John.
Sure.
I'm going to bring it up and throw it out there.
So yes, on Monday, we met, this is a facilities committee, reviewed the most recent change orders, and there's some other considerations for the different projects in progress. Middle school auditorium is going along incredibly well. The other projects are timeline-wise in a good position, and budget-wise, we're in a healthy place. We are going to have to discuss the roof at the high school gym A pretty soon, so Nick is gathering some more information. He's going to give that to us at the next meeting, and then we'll have more information for you, but we're going to have to address that sooner than later, so we'll keep you guys posted.
Can you remind me the concern with the roof?
It's leaking.
Significantly.
In a lot of places. It's pretty much going to have to be redone.
And this is outside of the bottom project. This is something that has emerged and needs to be addressed.
Okay. It's just started leaking.
And the change orders for the board's approval will be on our next meeting that we discussed.
Okay, all right.
And I'll just say that during these meetings... And I'll just say that during these meetings, we don't necessarily always like what Nick has to say, but we never, I at least never think that he's not on top of everything with the really, really good diligent work. And I just want to commend him and the rest of the facilities staff.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Any other things?
Wait one second. No, thank you.
Can I have a motion to go back into executive session to continue discussing the superintendent's?
It's been moved.
Moved? Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So why don't we take?
Congratulations, PIG students.
Yeah.
Yes, we'll take five minutes, and then we'll come back in our conference room. PIG students, yeah, make sure you guys sign out.